Good morning, or good evening, and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Fairmont School Board. Can you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and the roll call is all present except Julie Lowey. And the agenda, we have a couple changes.
Nicole's gonna make the motion for that.
Okay, and so.
And that there are no minutes.
And there are no minutes, and we'll approve those later. So if I can get a motion to accept the...
I move to approve the February 28, 2017 school board meeting agenda as amended.
Can I get a second? Can I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on, we have some celebrations.
Joe? Yes, I have a resolution to read. Last week, the Governor Mark Dayton declared for the first time, School Bus Driver Appreciation Day in Minnesota. And I'll read this resolution. Whereas in the darkness and daylight, from dirt roads to multilane highways, from the warm spring afternoons to frigid winter mornings, Minnesota school bus drivers safely transport more than 760,000 precious students to and from school each day. And whereas school bus drivers are important figures in children's lives, serving as a positive influence for students, and whereas the school bus driving industry is the largest form of mass transit in Minnesota, and has worked hard to reduce its environmental impact through the use of alternative fuels and retrofitting old diesel engines, and whereas it is estimated that the use of school buses saved the United States more than 2.3 billion gallons of fuel per year, and whereas students are nearly eight times safer riding to and from school in a school bus than in cars, thanks to rigorous, vigorous safety standards for vehicles, drivers, as well as student training efforts, and whereas the state of Minnesota appreciates school bus drivers and recognizes the invaluable contributions they make to public education and student safety. Now therefore, I, Mark Dayton, Governor of Minnesota, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, February 22, 2017, as School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. I just want to point out that Minnesota Motor Bus did have a celebration for our bus drivers on that day. The owners of Minnesota Motor Bus were here in town. Sue Nelson and I went to that reception. Coach Mahoney, as Activities Director, went there too. You know, this is a big deal for our district. We spend about $1.2 million a year just on transporting our students to and from school and to and from school events. And we're very fortunate, but I will suggest this, that if anybody's interested in becoming a bus driver, Minnesota Motor Bus, as well as all bus companies throughout the state of Minnesota, are looking for good quality drivers. Many of our drivers have been driving for many years, and there's going to be many openings. And so if anybody's interested in a part-time job, either in the morning or in the evening, they should contact Minnesota Motor Bus. So we appreciate the Governor doing this.
Has that been done before?
No, this is the first time this has ever been done in Minnesota, that we have a School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. And so it's a big deal.
Very good.
Yep.
Okay, another celebration. We have two AAA winners with us tonight. Coach Mahoney is gonna introduce.
Good evening. I got two people with me here today, Lauren Carlson and Tony Joseph, and they were our 2017 AAA Award winners. Just a little quick background too, on how we do this. Right about the first part of December, me and our two counselors, and then I get a music representative, and then I get another senior high teacher, and us five sit down and we kind of break down. We look at grade point averages, we look at what they're doing in the music, we look at activities, we get their senior, we get the senior binder, what their senior plans. We take in a lot of account. Probably takes us about maybe, you know, anywhere from 60 minutes to 90 minutes to kind of narrow it down on to our selection and who we pick. And it's never easy, I'll be honest with you. It's never easy. It's always tough. We get to a spot where we get about three kids, and then we really start to nitpick a little bit and kind of find comit. And like I said, these are our two winners this year, Lauren Carlson and Tony Joseph. You know, I've kind of spoke a lot about them. I kind of wrote up a nice little script up here, but I think it would be nice for them to come up here and maybe introduce themselves a little bit, and kind of tell them what they've been up to, where they're gonna go off to college, and if you guys have any questions for them. Does that sound good?
That'd be great.
Tony, why don't you come on up?
For those of you who don't know me, my name's Tony Joseph. I'm the son of Simi and Abraham Joseph. My dad's a hospitalist over at Mayo in Fairmont, and my mom stays at home. I've also got a little sister named Brianna. She's amazing, best little sister in the world.
Did she just win something?
Yeah. My sister recently attended the Regional Spelling Bee in Mankato, where she came in first place after a grueling, I want to say 40, 43 rounds, against the second-place winner Emily Speaker. Her winning word was curious, and with that word, she won a trip to Washington DC at the Scripps National Spelling Bee in May and June. So that's a major source of pride in the family. We take pride in spelling. So that's really the, that's really what my sister's really good at right now, on top of being in band and orchestra, abandoned a bunch of other extracurricular activities. And so with me, I'm in a lot of stuff too. I'm in band and orchestra. I'm in speech at the moment. Knowledgeable's in full swing. We have regionals coming up in a week, so that'll be a lot of fun. And then tennis is just getting underway with a couple of the captains starting to organize some captains' practices. And am I missing anything? But, and then there's, of course, there's solo ensembles coming up with the jazz band and orchestra solos, which I'm in. And so we've got, March is a really, really busy month, so it's really a pleasure to be up here and talk to you guys about it. And I don't know if you have any questions for me, but I think I'll just open up the floor.
Tony, where will you be going to school?
Right. So I've got, currently, I'm undecided. So I don't know where exactly I'm going to be, but I have gotten so far, I've applied to five different colleges, and I've gotten acceptance letters from University of Minnesota Duluth, the University of Minnesota and Twin Cities, and Arizona State University in Tempe. Along with ASU, I've been accepted to their Honors College, the Barrett Honors College. So I'm looking at maybe a more insulated environment from the huge school atmosphere that they have. And I've also applied to the University of California in Los Angeles, as well as in Berkeley, and I'm waiting back for acceptance letters from them. And talking to Mr. Gertis and a couple other students who have attended there, they typically get back to you at the end of March. So they like taking their time, but fingers crossed.
You've been to Washington DC as well before.
Right. So in fifth, sixth, and seventh grade, I attended the same Regional Spelling Bee. It's held in Mankato at SCC College. And I won those three times there, against, two times against a kid named Dugan Bradley, who attended Loyola Catholic, and he was an excellent, excellent speller. So then with those three wins, I advanced to the Scripps National Spelling Bee in fifth, sixth, and seventh grade. And I also, in seventh grade, I want to say, it was a long time ago, in seventh grade, I advanced to the semifinal round, which is televised on ESPN. So that's my spelling story.
And Tony, do you know what you want to study in college?
Yeah. So right now, well, I say yeah enthusiastically, but right now, my majors at the moment are between biology and biochemistry. So I've either applied for biology, biochemistry, or both at my different colleges. And I'm not quite sure if that's dead set, what I want to do. At the moment, I'm planning on going into medicine, but I don't know. I'm not quite for sure yet. So I really like, I really like all the classes I take. There isn't a class I absolutely hate at school. So I'd be open to anything. So my plans are subject to change, I guess.
Keep your mind open.
Yeah.
Colleges for exploration.
Right.
Okay, well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Here's Lauren Carlson.
You've got certificates.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, hi, I'm Lauren. My parents are Lisa and Paul Carlson, and they both work at Carlson Dental Office. I have a brother. His name's Evan. He's in ninth grade. And then, okay, what I've been involved in, I've tried, I don't know, not, I've been in everything, not, I don't know why, I just have. So for sports, I've been in tennis for, since seventh grade. I was in hockey from seventh grade until 11th grade. And then recently, I guess, I'm sure you guys have heard about the dance team, but I, along with my mom and a couple of other people, worked to start that. So we had a really great first season. It was super fun. It just actually ended yesterday for me. And then in the spring, I'm a long-distance runner for track, and I've done that since seventh grade too. And then for, I've been in band since fifth grade, and I play the trumpet. And then I'm also a flag captain during the summer for like marching band. For speech, I've been in speech since seventh grade, and it's been super fun because I've tried like everything. I went from poetry in seventh grade, which is super, it's interp, which is like a script written out for you. And then I went to storytelling, which is where you tell stories. And then I went to oratory, which is where you persuade. And now I'm in informative and duo. So I've done everything. And I'm a captain there. What else? I think that's pretty much it. I've been in musicals. I really enjoy those. So yeah.
Plans for college?
Oh, yep. I'm undecided like Tony. Right now, I'm trying to decide between Gustavus College in St. Peter, Drake University in Des Moines, and then I'm waiting back for acceptance from St. Olaf. So I'll decide between those three.
Good luck.
Thanks. And I'm planning to study, I'm planning to go pre-med like Tony, but I want to major in neuroscience. And then I'm really interested in Spanish as well as religion, so I hope to maybe double minor or something, play with those somehow. We'll see. I'm not sure yet.
Anybody have any other questions?
Congratulations, Lauren.
Thanks.
And I have certificates for both of you.
Make sure you get a good photo.
What's that?
Get a photo.
Yeah. Lauren?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
And a picture.
Anything else for us? We actually, we both got to go back. Both of them got to play in the pep band, and we got Lauderdale coming into town tonight for a section girls' basketball game. So hopefully see you there.
I just wonder, we have a number of teachers in our audience tonight. Did any of you have either one of these two students as students? Well, thank you, and congratulations to you two.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Coach.
Superintendent.
First of all, if you pull out your pink sheets, school board calendar, there's a couple of adjustments on this that I want to put your attention to. First of all, the second one down, where it says, Board Student Council Breakfast at the elementary, that should be Thursday, March 2nd. That's this Thursday, March 2nd, at 8:10, if any board members can make it. And you'll be meeting with a sixth-grade student council. And that will be held in the 3-6 cafeteria. Let's see here. And then, one thing to add, after Tuesday, March 7th, Tuesday, March 7th, at 7:30 in the morning, there'll be, the school board will have breakfast with high school students, and that will be held in the Commons at the high school. Once again, Tuesday, March 7th, 7:30 in the morning. And then we have another policy committee that we've scheduled for Thursday, March 16th. And we're in the process of trying to schedule a curriculum policy committee sometime after March 8th. On March 8th, if you can recall, we'll be taking a field trip to Chanhassen High School. And following that trip, sometime after March 8th, we will have a curriculum committee meeting, so we can look at some of the new classes that are being considered at the high school, and looking at graduation requirements of our Fairmont High School. And then also Friday, March 31st, Family Fun Fair. You know, traditionally, the district has set up a booth at Family Fun Fair, and we're still trying to find out if people are going to come to that or not, specifically school board members. There's a couple ways we can do that. One, we could actually have some type of a fun thing to do, or we could simply set up a booth and have school board members there if people wanted to come by and chat with us. So if you could let Judy know what your preference would be, we could plan for that. That's a full month away. Okay?
Can I just say something?
Sure.
I really hope that at the elementary school, when we meet with the sixth-grade student council, we've done that before. It's very fun. Sixth-grade student council is always very open with us. They let us know what they like, what they don't like, what their suggestions are, and they have vision. And also, the meeting on Tuesday, March 7th, at 7:30 AM in the Commons with our junior and senior high school students, I'd encourage parents or anyone listening, if you've heard your student talk about school, things they love, things they wish would change, or ideas they have, to please come talk to us. We love to hear from our students. And it's a great opportunity. We'll be there. It's very open. Anyone that's in the school can come and talk to us. We'll be in the Commons.
And it'll be just school board members and maybe Joe, if he's able to attend?
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
Enrollment report, just an update on the enrollment. The elementary stayed steady. We had some students in, some students out, but two weeks ago, when we had our school board meeting, we had 875 students at the elementary, and we have 875 students again today. At the high school, we're down three students. Two at the senior high school level, the senior class that went over to the ALC, and we did pick up, we had some students leave, but we picked up three more students, but we're down a net of three. So we're serving 1,669 students. Okay. One class to look for, though, if you look at the first grade class for a minute, we started the year with 119 in first grade, if you look at September 12. And we had that number for quite a few months, and then now we have 109. And we've lost 10 students out of the first grade. And really, for one of three reasons, either because of job opportunities, maybe going back and forth between guardianship, and just some other people, you know, moving at that young level. So that's kind of, that's the one class that's really taken a dip this year. The other thing I'll just mention to the board is that yesterday, I had the opportunity, I was up at the State Capitol for, to be part of that Compensation Commission again, and that went well. We have one more meeting on March 27th, but we're getting really close to making a final report to the Legislature for recommendations for the pay, recommendations for our district court judges, our Supreme Court judges, the Governor, the Cabinet, and the statewide officers of Attorney General, Lieutenant Governor, Secretary State, and State Auditor. And we pretty much, our committee of 16, met, yesterday was the third time we've met. We'll meet again on March 27th to put our final report together, and then we turn that over to the State Legislature on April 1st. And it's just simply a recommendation they have to decide whether or not to faddle through on our recommendation. But in the meantime, I did have the opportunity to go and visit State Representative Bob Gunther yesterday morning, and he has actually introduced a bill that relates to our Saturday Welding Academy. And that, if you can recall, when we applied for state aid for our students that are taking that Saturday welding class, we were turned down because, the Department of Ed said, because we're teaching that class outside of the regular school day, we do not get state aid for that. And so I asked Representative Gunther and Senator Rosen to support a piece of legislation. And the piece of legislation is rather small. It's a one-line piece of law, which simply states that if we have a shared-time student, that if he or she is taking a vocational class outside of the regularly scheduled school day, it would generate state aid. And so we'll see, we're going to be tracking that bill. And my guess is that that will probably become part of the Omnivous Education Act. And if it passes, then it might be another way for us. And I pointed out to both Representative Gunther and Senator Rosen, that this bill really shouldn't cost the state a lot of money for two reasons. One, very few schools have vibrant vocational programs with certified teachers like Fairmont does. You know, many high schools have simply eliminated those programs. And point number two, I think we're the only school that actually is offering a Saturday class that students are coming to for four hours a day. And I will report, we did not, we did not have class on Saturday because of the storm, but since that class began, we've had perfect attendance. And we have eight students that drive over from Blue Earth every Saturday. We have two from Martin Luther High School, one from Grenada. The rest are our students, and we have four adults. And so it's kind of a neat thing that we're doing, and we're very proud of our program that we have at the high school.
How many weeks is that?
It's a 17-week course, and so students can actually get 68 hours of training. And I know from personal observation from a person taking that class, that they get better as the weeks go on. For some of you that might know, my wife is taking that class, and she paid her $250 tuition, and every day she, every week, she comes home with new things that she has made. And then she takes them to school, at Austin High School, to show her class that's okay to learn, that's okay to learn new things. And you get better as you practice. It's a good lesson for the high school students to learn.
Is a second session planned?
You know, right now, we're in the embryonic stages of starting to look now at summer.
Okay.
Because my hope is that we have, remember, the school board set aside some appropriation for this summer and next summer, for vocational classes to either upgrade their equipment or to expand the offerings in the summertime. And we're looking at agriculture, we're looking at welding, and we're looking at construction trades. So we hope that all three of those classes will be running this summer.
If students or community folks were interested in signing up for the next session, who would be a good contact person?
I would suggest they contact the counseling department, either Mr. Gertis or Mrs. Schwieger.
Okay.
And it will start generating numbers. And that's exactly what happened when we developed the Saturday welding class. It was simply an idea, and we made it available for folks. We only have three of our students taking the class, but the rest of the students are either four adults, or eight students from Blue Earth, and two from Martin Luther, and one from Grenada, Lee's Chain, which is really neat to see. And if you're around on Saturday, by the way, anytime from 8 to noon, or if you want to stop by and bring chocolate muffins or anything from Perkins, hint, hint, coffee, things like that.
Subtle.
It is, it's really neat to come and stop and just watch these 18 students from all different ages. There are five women and 13 men taking this class, and they're all working together in such great collaboration. And the fact that they come at 8 o'clock in the morning on a Saturday is phenomenal. I'm very proud of our program that we have.
Okay, very good.
Ready for bills?
Bills.
Okay, I'm going to put my Sue Nelson and Julie Lowey hat on tonight. The first thing I'll report is the transfers and wires for February 9th through February 22. You'll notice there's a big payment here, an ideas payment. We received $658,838.13 from the state of Minnesota. And these are metered payments, and school aid, as it's sent to us from the state, we get those payments twice a month. And this is simply part of our state aid that we get. Remember, 85% of the funding to operate our schools comes from the State Legislature in St. Paul. And so that's the big item there to point out. And then if we go to the payment register of check numbers, I'll pull, just put your attention to a few things that are kind of interesting in this. If you go to check number 59502, made out to Fairmont Fire Systems, by state statute, we have to have people come in and do a fire inspection in our elementary and our high school kitchens twice a year. And so we paid $1,226 for a professional company to come and do those inspections, and everything looks great at both of our kitchens. We talked about this a little bit tonight with the two students here indirectly, but check number 59520, made out to Minnesota State University of Mankato for a solo ensemble. We had 115 entries in the solo ensemble. These are students representing the band, the choir, and the orchestra. And that was on March 6th, and the cost of that was $1,150.
Will be March 6th.
Pardon me?
It will be March 6th.
It will be March 6th, thank you. Okay, got it. And then check number 59530, made out to Riverbend Business Products. Just to point out that we have a monthly lease with our copying company. And then we are in the process of going out and getting competitive bids or competitive quotes right now from Riverbend and from Metro Sales. We can actually, we don't have to go out for a request for proposal for a product if the people that bid are at or below the statewide pricing. So the state comes out with a pricing schedule, and if companies can beat that price, then we don't have to go out for bid. But we are getting two quotes. We've had Metro Sales before. We have Riverbend supplies our copiers right now at our elementary and high school. And the idea is whoever's selected, those new copiers will come this summer, and then throughout the summer, we'll be teaching people how to actually use them. I see there's a roar from the audience of people rooting for new copiers. Are the ones that are in there now five years old, I believe? Don't we have like a five-year lease? And it's amazing how many copies we make throughout the year. It's in the millions. And then I want to call your attention too, to check number 59531 for Schiffler Equipment Sales. If you've had the opportunity to visit Fairmont Elementary School by the band, choir, and orchestra rooms, we now have hooks on the wall. If you can recall, if you've ever been there late in the afternoon, there used to be hundreds of coats and bookbags and boots laying all over the hallway. And the fire marshal was not a real fan of that. And so what we did, we had the maintenance department order hooks that we have hanging on the wall, and we taught students how to use them. They're tricky, because the hooks go the other way, instead of, anyway, you have to look at them. Anyhow, Thursday, right before the storm hit, I was walking in the latter part of the day, and I was really, I was so proud. Every single hook was being used, and there was nothing on the floor. The fire marshal would have been enjoyable. But we paid $459.31 to purchase those hooks, and they are now installed. And more importantly, it makes our building look better, and it's a lot safer for kids to be in the hallway in case we do have to do a quick evacuation. So if you want to come up and see our hooks, you're open to do that. And with that, if there's any other questions about the bills, I'd be glad to try to answer them. Otherwise, I'll have to ask a board member to move them.
I move to approve the wire transfers for February 9th through February 22nd, 2017, and payment of the February 28, 2017 bills.
Second.
Can I have a second? Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
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 It passes, thank you. No old business. We have one item of new business policy.
Okay, policy committee met. We went through quite a few policies. We're getting to the 600s, which is where I think the fun stuff is. Basically, the ones that are listed tonight are 604 instructional curriculum, 610 field trip, 611 homeschooling, 615 testing accommodation modification exemptions for all students, 618 assessment of student achievement, 619 staff development for standards. And if you look through your packet, policy 604 instructional curriculum, all of the changes made are highlighted in red, and they reflect the world's best workforce and are MSBA-recommended. Policy 610 has to do with field trips. All the changes, once again, are highlighted in red and are according to MSBA recommendation. One thing that to note is, under Section 4, School Board Review, the superintendent is responsible for ensuring that the field trip policy is followed and adhered to, and reporting that to the board. And this is especially true with, probably with our elementary school that does quite a few field trips, and also some of our high school classes. And he will be following up with that. Policy 611 on homeschooling, once again, changes marked in red. It reflects changes in statute in Minnesota. And I, when I read through this, I was really impressed. I think it shows how Um, I think it shows how important educating our students is, and how public schools can partner with homeschooling and other types of schooling to ensure that all students have a great education. And I thought it was a, I, I learned a lot when I read through that policy. As, policy six-fifteen was updated to reflect current state statute. Policy six-nineteen, staff development for standards, um, once again, um, changes just reflect the uh, language that is in Every Child Succeeds Act, instead of the No Child Left Behind Act, and also, uh, World's Best Workforce. Six-eighteen, assessment of student achievement, same thing, highlights changes in language based on, uh, new programs. And that is it. So, with that, I move to approve the preceding policies with the, uh, revisions noted in the policies.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Can I have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We move on to personnel, Dell.
Excuse me. Um, we have, uh, Heidi Schulman has indicated her intention to retire effective at the end of the school year. Heidi has been employed with our district since nineteen-eighty-four. I would move that we approve the retirement of Heidi Schulman, effective June 6th, 2017.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second? Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We also have a resignation. Kelly Krueger notified us that she'll not be returning to teach in the district this fall, following the conclusion of her three-year leave of absence. Under the leave of absence law, Heidi has requested to re- had Heidi requested to return to work, the district would have been obligated to bring her back as a full-time teacher. So, I would, uh, make a motion to approve the resignation of Kelly Krueger, effective February 20th, 2017.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then finally, we have, uh, Jim Davison is recommending that Mary Best be hired as a noon hour aide, effective February 21st of 2017. Mary has past experience working as a paraprofessional, and currently serves, uh, serves as a foster parent. Mary will be working two hours daily, Monday through Friday. So, I would make a motion to approve the employment of Mary Best as a noon hour aide at the salary of a step one, effective January 21st, 2017.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thanks, Dell. And we come to board committee reports. Policy committee, Nicole.
Yep, we met on February 16th, we discussed, uh, looked over the policies that were approved tonight. We also looked at policy six-oh-five, six-oh-eight, six-oh-nine, six-twelve-point-one, six-two-three, and six-two-four. They all had no changes, and therefore required no board action tonight. Um, you can review those policies if you'd like, they are on the website. Also, we looked at, um, policy six-one-three graduation requirements and six-two-oh credit for learning, and decided that we needed to review them further before we brought them before the board. And we want to ensure that every student is presented with and provided the opportunities needed to explore their career options and meet educational needs, and their individual goals in life and in, in education, while still following state guidelines and statutes. So, we'll be continuing to review and look over that and discuss with all those involved in those policy areas. And we'll have more of that coming forward.
Thank you. Questions?
Just a comment about the policy stuff. It's, uh, we've given this a lot of time and effort, but it is super important, so I, I'm just kind of happy as a board member that we give it the due diligence that it requires. Lot of meetings, but a lot of stuff to go over there. Really good stuff.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, we come to the end of our agenda.
I move to, uh, adjourn at five-thirty-seven.
Anybody else interested?
Second.
I have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Where's your?